We got two of them. Then you got one now getting started.
Yeah, I think that's my question.
I think that was sharp. Yeah. I don't think it is.
No, no. I don't want to say.
See that, I think we wrapped up.
Yeah, I don't know.
I never approached it that way.
Yeah, I don't think I did.
Huh?
A little because I just decided behind the door.
I never approached it that way.
Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. Our first item of business is White Marsh Point at Eagle Landing project update. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, a few weeks ago, you asked for an update on the White Marsh Point at Eagle Landing project. We were fortunate this afternoon to have a Suffolk redevelopment housing executive director Tracy Snipes and Director of Community Development Tammy Jackson with us to provide that update. Tracy, good evening. Good afternoon, excuse me.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor. Vice Mayor Bennett, City Manager Moore, and the other city council persons. Thank you for having SRH here to provide you an update on the White Marsh Point and Eagle Landing community. As many of you know, this project has been a very long time coming. My predecessor Clarissa McAdoo Canyon and way too many other board members to mention have all been integral parts of to complete this project. Despite the pandemic, the rising cost of the materials, the lack of staffing of the contractors, and the more than usual amount of rain, we have provided a community that anyone would be proud to call home. On October 23rd, 2020, mortgage closing and loan endorsement by HUD to convert 206 units of public housing into a low income housing tax credit project known as White Marsh Point at Eagle Landing. This is the former Cypress Manor and Parker Riddick Apartments that were constructed in the 1970s, the very first public housing communities in the city of Suffolk and the oldest properties managed by Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority. This community is designed for a better, more seamless integration of affordable housing in Suffolk and the culmination of many years of hard work. White Marsh Point at Eagle Landing is a rehabilitation and reconstruction low-income housing tax credit project made up of 113 rehab units, that was formerly Cypress Manor, known now as Eagle Landing, and 93 new construction units formerly Parker Riddick, known now as White Marsh Point. Here is an aerial of the commu-- oops, sorry. An aerial of the community as it stands now. The address for the community used to be 94 Stacy Drive. We've now changed that to Marsh Point Drive. The estimated cost of the project is $46.3 million, and it was estimated to be a mixture of tax credits, loans from SRHA, City of Suffolk funding, grants from the Federal Home Loan Bank, and miscellaneous sources. SRHA loan, 5.8 million. FHA mortgage of 23.1 million. Tax credits of 13 million. The federal home loan grant of 1 million. The city of Suffolk, $275,000, and miscellaneous sources, another $500,000. During the construction phase, residents transferred to a rehabilitated unit in the complex while those in units being demolished have received housing choice voucher assistance, formerly known as Section 8, allowing them to relocate to other residents throughout Suffolk. Upon their return to Eagle Landing, should they elect to do so, their rent remained the same. To assist with the conversion, property management will be provided by Vista Capital Management, a firm experienced with managing low-income housing tax credit properties for a period ending 2024 when SRHA will assume management of the properties. Both properties will be owned and managed by Eagle Landing Apartments LP, based on a long-term ground lease with SRHA, with SRHA as 51% general manager and TCG development advisor as the managing general property. And this is the flow chart of ownership. The new community, White Marsh Point, will consist of five residential buildings and one community center. This is a rendering of the White Marsh Point community. These apartments are three stories, three walk-up stories, as Mr. Bennett says, no elevator, just walking upstairs. It's 17 one-bedroom units, 56 two-bedroom units, and 23 bedroom units. These are pictures of the project as it stands right now, and it is absolutely beautiful out there. I encourage everyone, please take an opportunity to drive through there because it is definitely a different-looking community out there, something that Suffolk should be very proud to call low-income housing project, community. This is the community room that's on the White Marsh Point side. Currently, the community room is being used as the office for the property management company until we get some issues fixed there, but this is the community room. This is the inside of one of the apartments. These apartments have amenities that the other community didn't. We are providing dishwashers, washer-dryer hookups. These are extremely modern-looking apartments, a huge difference from what we had there This is bathroom. This is a bathroom for a handicap or accessible unit. More pictures of the construction that's happening there. This is the dry pond. We've had a lot of discussion around this because for a while, this was filled with water, but I didn't understand that it would eventually, with all the drains in place, it would not be a place that's a waterfront property for our families or a swimming pool for the children. It actually is dry, but we will be putting a fence around that just in the event that water stands in that area. We are currently on schedule with this community. We hope to have everyone housed by December 31, 2022. We may end up going a little bit into 2023, but our goal is for the end of the year to have all 93 units filled. For the Eagle Landing side, that's the side where we did the rehab work, there are 75 two-bedroom units and 38 three-bedroom units. You will notice that in even though we took down the public housing, changed the public housing, we still have the same number of units that we had prior. It was 206 units of public housing. Now it's 206 units of low-income housing. And that's some of the rehab work that has been done on the exterior of the buildings. A total of 95 units and 14 buildings have been completed and reoccupied. We have three buildings that are still underway, and we're hoping to have those completed by the end of the month. The timeline for Eagle Landing, you know, is also December 2022. These are a picture of some of the renovations that have been done inside the units. We redid the stairways. What a difference that made. The landscaping and the sheds on the outside of the communities. And that is it. For the housing choi-- for the waiting list, you know, when we have housing, it's, you know, where are we going to get the people? There is no shortage of families that are needing housing right now, affordable housing. Our current waiting list for our housing choice voucher program stands at 3,354 people. We opened that back in 2020. We've slowly been taking people off of the list. It has not been open since that time. There's definitely a need. For the Eagle Landing project, we have 1,016 people on the waiting list. For the White Marsh Point project, we have 1,162 people on the waiting list, and for public housing, we have 449 families that are on the waiting list. None of these waiting lists have been opened in a long time, so we have over 6,000 families that are waiting to be housed somewhere. So there is definitely a need for affordable housing, and I'm happy that the Housing Authority can provide 206 units. I'd like to show you guys an overall view, and I'm not sure where it is. Do you know how I get to the flyover? Oh, here we go. Here we go. This is a kind of bird's eye view of the community. You will see it's such a different look. What you're looking at now is what was the former Cypress Manor. Or is it Parker? Parker Riddick was the former Parker Riddick. It consists of five buildings now in the community room. We chose bright vibrant colors so that it's a place where families would want to be, not have to be. And then you can see on the other side of the road, there's Eagle Landing that was It's a big difference looking at it from this view. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Snipes. Council questions, comments? Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Tracy, for coming out tonight. It's a pleasure to see you again.
You also.
I've had the pleasure to sit with you in redevelopment housing and watch this process several months while it was in the planning stages.
Yes, sir.
And boy, what a tug and pull it was to get it to where it's at today. You're certainly not lacking for people. I'm sure that, and you might elaborate on this, the folks that lived there before all this started and they got the vouchers, do they have the opportunity to come back to those facilities first before anybody else comes back?
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay, because that's--
Most of them probably will not--
I got you.
--because they've got the vouchers in hand.
I got you.
But they do have the right to come back.
But I got to commend you for doing such a great job because I've watched you go through some misery with this project, believe me.
Nothing worth having is ever easy, right?
I know. But you, along with your staff, done an excellent job, and certainly your board has stuck in there to help push this thing along. And it just takes everybody to work together to get it to this point because it was a monumental project. When you look at the amount of the money and expense that, you know, you had to get and go through, and I can remember having the developer come in and talking about how this was going to work and how the money was going to come. It was blowing my mind what they were trying to do, but again, I appreciate what you're doing and just keep up the good work, and these people deserve a nice place to live.
They certainly do.
And this is just, I'm going to get a chance to come over with you and we'll go do through a walkthrough, but I got to tell you, this is a great improvement over what they had. It's more updated. It's, they ought to be proud of what they're going to get when they move in there, and they should feel really homey when they get there. So, because they got to walk the stairs out, that's good for them. They get a little exercise.
That's exactly.
And I see that you had made the walkways, the walls, the interior accessible, handicap accessible--
Yes, sir.
--which is a big deal because sometimes the doorways are not wide enough or the walls are high with stairwells or the walls going down to the rooms are not wide enough. So it's nice that that was thought of and that was taken care of. So that helps the handicapped because I'm sure you'll have experienced some of that over there.
Yes, sir.
So again, I want to thank you for being here tonight. Excellent job. I want you to pass that on to everybody that I certainly appreciate what you all have done and continue to do to make Suffolk a great place for people to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. Tracy, adding to Ms. Jackson, I think you all deserve a lot of credit with the staff and all. This has been a long time coming. I can remember way, 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 I would say at least 10 years--
I'm more than that.
--back or more--
[laughing]
--that this project was trying to get off and started. A lot of hurdles had to go through, and really, personally, I didn't believe it was going to happen, but you all continued to fight and try to secure the funding and whatnot. So I'm very happy that you were able to do that. I think it's great for the community. What has happened there is an improvement and an uplift to the community, and I hope that they will feel that they are people, that people, just like everyone else with housing, don't want to be public housing anymore. So I think changing that name is great--
Yes.
--from public housing because I think that carries a stigma with that, the name. So I think this is going to help some people within themselves when they're living there, and I hope that they really, really take care of it. And the renovation of the new older buildings, I think you all have done an outstanding job with that, and I'm happy to see that it's being filled, but I hate to see the waiting list continue to grow, and I know it's been there for a long time. And the Section 8 people, as you said, a lot of them have had the opportunity now to go into a home rather than an apartment. So naturally, they probably will not be interested in coming back to the apartments, but at least you have given them the opportunity if they would like to come back, the first opportunity to come back and be one of the residents of that, which I think is great. And I do appreciate your presentation. I think you need to have this more advertised so people can see because a lot of people don't know. They don't think we are doing anything to try and help people in housing. And I think this is a great tool to advertise and let people know, even though you don't have any space, but we are working to try to improve their quality of life here in Suffolk. Again, thank you all for all you do.
And I thank you for your support, Vice Mayor. You're always at our meetings, and I really appreciate your support of the project.
Thank you. Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Snipes and Ms. Jackson. Thank you all for what you've done. I do have a question.
Yes.
You surprised me with the 6,000 list, and I say this, how do we handle that? How do we do something and handle that situation when there's a need of 6,000 more homes?
There has to be more affordable housing. One of my suggestions would be when people are coming in to do projects within the city of Suffolk, make sure a certain portion of them are for the low to very low-income families. That's not always popular, but that is a way of making sure that even in the nicer communities that, you know, we house some families throughout the city. In the northern end of Suffolk, I have very little Section 8 in the northern end of the city. It would be great if we had more property, more landlords that are willing to put their houses on the Section 8 program. We're not really creating public housing anymore, so Section 8 is really the push.
The way to go.
So any buildings that, you know, we could get that, you know, maybe a tax foreclosure or--
or something like that that could be given to the Housing Authority or sold at a very low price that could be used for low-income housing, that would be good or affordable housing, I'm sorry, not low-income.
All right. Thank you very much, but it's absolutely a need, and somehow we have to--
It's definitely a need.
--encourage some others to come in and do some things to help out because, I mean, 6,000 is just, just one too, just too many.
And that 6,000 people were with seven days of the list being open, so it's not like it was open for a long period of time.
Long period of time, right.
It was, you know, each one was for two or three days at a time, a total of seven days.
Well, thank you all for your work.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, great presentation--
Thank you.
--Ms. Snipes. My hats off to you, your staff, and your Board of Commissioners. I mean, I know this has been a long time coming because when I was on the board, we was talking about this project.
That's exactly right.
So I just want to just thank you and, again, your staff and the board for sticking in there and making it happen. Just to piggyback off what Councilman Goldberg had alluded to was we need affordable housing here in Suffolk. And hopefully, you know, during some of our meetings, we'll discuss something like that and kind of push that issue. It is not just here in Suffolk, it's throughout the Tidewater area.
Right.
We need more affordable housing. But I'm looking forward to touching bases with you and having an opportunity to walk through and take a look at things because the last time I was there was just to feel. So it's been that long, so I'm looking forward to it.
No, it's a very nice field now.
Yes. So I am definitely looking forward to it, and thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, great job, Trey. Ms. Snipes, appreciate it. Always know you can do it. We talked, we haven't talked in a while, but you've always been there and always explained to me what was going on. I just want to know how many handicap units you have?
Do you have that number offhand, Tammy? Six. It's six at the new community, and I think it's 12 or 14 at Eagle Landing.
Okay. I think, and also, I would like to have a walkthrough if we can make that possible.
Anytime you would like to, please just contact me, and I'll be happy to be your chauffeur and show you around the communities. We're quite proud of it over there, and it's a community that I would hold up to any of the other communities that are here in Suffolk. So please, by all means, come out. I know we're back in the cut a little bit so people don't see us, but I really would like to invite everyone out so that you can see the quality work that's been done out there.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Johnson?
Trey, I wasn't going to say anything. You know how much I appreciate what's going forward, and you've done an excellent job.
Thank you.
I didn't see many playgrounds, though. Do we have--
There will be a playground. It's not put up yet, but there will be a playground on one side and a basketball court on the other. And I will tell you that with the builders, the basketball court has been a thing that they have been trying to get rid of, and I insist staying there.
No question. Right, right. Or maybe we could even enlarge it a little bit and make it more of a focal point.
Yeah, every time they talk about cutting price, you know, we can get rid of the basketball court. Nope, we cannot. So there will be a basketball court on one side and a playground on the other.
And please keep us informed as we go forward, whatever we can to encourage more affordable housing with some of your guidance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
I just have one other question I want to ask. I know in Portsmouth, they built a section wherein that it was sort of a mixed neighborhood wherein that it had some Section 8 plus regular homeowners. Do we have anything that we are looking at to come into a community and do that?
We could do that in a different project. Unfortunately, we're kind of landlocked right where we are. The dismal swamp is back behind us, and--
Right.
--there's nothing really to do. That project is a complete Section 8--
Yeah.
--community.
Because where that was set up, people didn't know that a person might be on Section 8 that lived next door to them.
Right.
But all of them was living in the same community.
Right.
And I think that gives a lot of encouragement to people if we could move forward, looking at trying to do some of that in Suffolk as well.
A mixed-use, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments?
Ms. Snipes, thank you very, very, very much for your presentation. Greatly appreciate not only your efforts, but your staff's efforts, your board members' efforts. Mr. A.J. Parker keeps me well informed of what's going on in your meetings. I may not be there, but--
He's little, but he's powerful.
Okay, yeah, he's a powerful little guy.
Yes, he is.
That's a lot packed into about 90 pounds. But, you know, I visited, I guess it was Eagle Landing this past summer.
Yes, sir.
We stopped by with the renovations.
Yes, sir.
And I think the Vice Mayor was there as well. I mean, it was very, very impressive as to how those units were rehabbed, the amenities that were there, the layout, the materials that you used. To me, lending themselves to low maintenance, and there was a lot of thought that went into the rehab, and it appeared to me, at least, that every square inch of available floor space was being used to, you know, to its advantage. There was nothing gone to waste, and I do know this was a long time coming. I remember talking about it as far as funding is concerned, getting presentations. I think one of the issues, I believe, was probably on Eagle Landing, whether to tear it down or rehab that part.
That's correct.
So there was, there was a lot of forethought that went into this project. Now, I do have one other question for you. If I'm not mistaken, I know you had a list of 6,000 people. Am I correct in saying that applicants do not have to live in the city of Suffolk, or are they all Suffolk residents?
I would say it's 90% Suffolk residents.
Okay, it's a majority?
Yes, sir.
Is Suffolk?
Major majority in Suffolk.
Okay. All right, that's the only question that I had, and once again, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, guys, for hearing me out. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Okay, that is the only topic in open session during our work session. We do have four items that will require a closed meeting, and as such, I'd like to ask the city clerk, Madam Clerk, if you would please read the motion for consideration.
Item number one, pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A8, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city. Specifically, the appointments as shown in the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the Agricultural Advisory Committee, the Clean Community Commission, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the Historic Landmarks Board, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Tidewater Youth Services Board, and the Western Tidewater Water Authority. Item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 and A8, the discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding Tax MAP Parcel 37C asterisk WH19 and 37C asterisk WHC15. Item number three, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 and A8, the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of such legal advice by such counsel regarding Tax MAP Parcel 12 asterisk 31G asterisk 1 and 10 asterisk 53. And the fourth item, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, specifically the matter of Dale Roberts et al. v. the City of Suffolk, excuse me, v. the City of Suffolk City Council et al.
Council, a motion has been presented for consideration. Councilman Fawcett?
Mayor, can we make one correction on number two? On 34C asterisk, she mentioned 37 needs to be corrected to 34.
34C asterisk WHC15.
Motion to move forward for approval. Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett with the correction. Councilman Williams? I second that. Got a second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we are hereby adjourned, and we'll reconvene at 6:00 P.M.